Okay. So, I want to call the meeting to order at 6:02. I need someone to review or someone to make a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Thanks Becky.
Thank you.
Thank you Derek. Okay, all of the, anything we need to add or delete? I don't know of anything.
Nope.
Okay, so hearing nothing? All of those that approve the agenda, please press your green button that says yes, or pressure red button that says no. The answer from Kevin, please. Rebecca, I saw yours. And Bill, so can you give me a thumbs up or thumbs down, Bill and Kevin?
Even with a real thumb is okay.
Yeah. I want to see Bill. Bill, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Do you approve the agenda?
Say what?
Do you approve the agenda?
Oh yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you. What about you Kevin?
Not everybody has to vote, right?
Well, I just, because it's an online thing, I just want to make sure that everybody has able chance, so. And I'm, I just wanted to make sure Kevin could hear us.
Yeah, Kevin, can you hear us?
Okay, so are you approving the agenda? From stating?
Sorry, I, I was, didn't have it, I had it unmuted by accident for a few minutes, but, yeah, sure, yeah.
You're approving the agenda, thank you, that's all I know. Okay, perfect. Then we have an approved agenda. We're going to move into our Board Professional Development. In your board packet earlier this week, or on Friday, you should have received a statement from Kevin that was to the board. Because it is in the packet and because it is public knowledge that way, and because it is rather lengthy, I am not going to ask Kevin to read it online. However, Kevin, if you want to take a couple of minutes to give it a good synopsis, that would be fine.
Uh, well, I don't know about a synopsis, but I guess there are two points that I wanted to bring up, three really. First, that I had some fundamental problems with the training. I think that's obvious if you read the document. And, and we didn't really discuss that adequately. Instead, we discussed the questions that the trainers presented. And I found that very frustrating. And I'm glad to have this opportunity to discuss those fundamental issues with the training. Those are twofold. First, the training implies a view of American history I think is fundamentally wrong. And I wanted to assert my expertise when it came to that history. And I can make the case in some detail about why it's fundamentally wrong if anybody wants to hear. And then secondly, I think that what's labeled anti-racist education as has been presented to us is, undermines free speech. In fact, I think it's antagonistic to free speech. So those are the two main points. I tried to make those arguments in some detail and, and you've had the chance to look at them, so thanks.
Thank you Kevin. Okay, so this opens it up to all board members to, if they would like to respond at all or ask questions to Kevin about his statement, I do want to make a point that it is Kevin's opinion, it is not the opinion of the board. And therefore, there are other things on our agenda tonight as well that we want to definitely talk about regarding equity and how that plays into all of our, our students here in the OVU district. But if anyone has any questions for Kevin, or then we are here and raise your hand, or somehow let me know you want to talk.
Lori, Claire has her hand raised?
Oh, thank you, I couldn't see that.
I, I am new to your process. I am from Chicago as of last year. I'm very interested in the community and the board and education. So I don't know if now is the time that I can ask a question, I am not on the board. Is there a time at the end?
I think if you have a question that pertains to Kevin's statement, then ask him.
Just a comment. By practice and career, I am a licensed clinical social worker, 30 years on the street in Chicago. And I am also licensed here in Vermont. And part of my career was on NASW. And we too, as an organization, tried to look at race. Race being mostly from the point of what it's like for people of color, people who are not in the majority of being white with the privilege and power that comes with that. And it was very disheartening around that table for the people on that committee, the Anti-Racism Committee, and I was one of two people to chair that, also with a woman of color. And people thought that they did not have any racist tendencies or thoughts. And I'm just here to put out that, as a person who grew up in this culture, in this country, I think you absolutely, as a white person, are racist down to the fibers of your being. Now whether you choose to act on that or not, is something that you have to decide on a very conscious level. And I think it's critical that we are able to do that. It is painful, it is hurtful. People throw up a lot of blocks to that. But I can tell you that it didn't work at the National Association for Social Workers because people don't want to give up stuff. So I'm just here to offer that to this group. It is an important conversation. We have to start with ourselves. There are a ton of good reading materials out there, and we have to be as honest with ourselves as is humanly possible. And it is in steps and increments that we do this work. But I believe it is critical. Our kids watch us day in and day out. We're in a country that is divided. Seventy million people voted for Trump, that says something. You know, I think we have a lot of work to do. And I put that out to you as a caring, a community member, a person involved in education for most of my life, on the streets, working with impoverished people, working with hate crime. And you know what? I have always stepped down and said, there's no way I could be raised in this culture and not be racist. It is in us. We have a choice to act on it or not. So take it or leave it, from my heart to this board and this gathering of good people.
Thank you Claire.
You're welcome.
Anyone else want to make any comments before we move on to our next point of order? Or discussion point?
I would ask one question of Kevin. Was part of your thesis, this dividing into groups as a form of discrimination or racism itself, simply by making these, identifying in one side or the other?
I'm not sure I understand you Bill, the dividing into groups as we did in the, in the session, or, I'm sorry.
No, just as a society. I'm obviously not connected here.
Yeah, are you asking me whether, whether?
This was part of your thought or?
Race is a reality in American society?
Oh, I know, I think so.
Is that what you're asking me?
No, I was asking you about your paper.
I'm sorry, I just don't follow the question.
Okay, I'll, I'll try again later, we'll see how the discussion goes.
Alright, thanks. Anyone else have a comment or question? Okay, so I'm going to move us into our next part, which we're obviously here for the meeting, which is to identify actions that we can take as a board to ensure all students in Honor Valley can access their full educational potential. Whether it's, mainly we're looking at equity, we're looking at socioeconomic background, making sure that they have all the needs that they can have so that they can get a quality education and do what they want, when they get ready to graduate. So, who would like to start? Who has any ideas as to what we can do as a board? One of them is obviously, put something into our policies around equity, which would probably be in our global ends, but maybe someone else has another idea? Angela, I see your hand up, sorry, go ahead.
Um, I would just somehow, somewhere, if we're going to offer something to the student body, then it needs to be offered to everybody, not, and not say that because of any reason that they're not able to get into that course, or that activity, or that whatever. So, one of my examples is driver's ed. Driver's ed, not all kids get to take it. Some parents have to pay for it, because they can, some of them can pay for it, some of them can't, but most of the time is they, they can't, they're not able to get into the course before they're 16, because there is not enough room in the course, or there's not enough, whatever the reasons are. But several parents and myself have had that issue, and had, have had to go out and pay for it, because their child wasn't able to get in. And there, I'm sure there's other, other examples, other than just that.
Barry, you have your hand raised?
Yeah Lori, I, I think it's a good idea that we do talk about equity, and probably drill down into some specifics perhaps. I know in our, in the material we got, there's a definition of equity, a draft definition anyway, and a draft policy, I guess. But even going back towards a lot of the other work we've done on the board, when we dealt with the different schools, the different towns, the different tools that were available, and trying to really work towards equity as a whole from that perspective, on a town and school basis, we never really got to defining what we thought equity was. We kind of talked around it a lot and did our best efforts towards trying to deliver what we thought equity would be in, in that arena, but we never really defined what we as a board thought equity was. And I thought this attempt to do that, right now, is probably pretty important. I think we should discuss it and pursue it. At least the material that we received this week.
That sounds like a good plan. Okay. So, that's a good question. So maybe it makes sense to come up with what everyone's idea of equity is, so that we can kind of get a consensus. Does that make sense to everyone? Do people, does people, I would like to hear from everyone, if possible. We can go around the room, you can raise your hands, we'll go with the people who want to go first. What would you like to do? I think it's a good place to start.
So if it helps, there is a draft definition in your supplemental packet, you can either spin off of it, or come up with your own words, but it is in your packet if it helps.
Okay, so there, right, that is on the first page of the supplemental document for discussion points. For those of you who can't access that, the equity draft definition says, equity is centered on the understanding that we need to prioritize student success for all, especially those furthest from justice. Equity is the process for redistributing access, so that it is distributed more fairly. It is a condition in which access and opportunity are distributed fairly, not predictable by race, gender identity, socioeconomic status, and other factors. Jean, do you know where this equity definition came from? Is this VSBA, or is this?
No, it's, it's actually, it's actually a combination of VS, the School Board Association, the Principals Association, the Superintendents Association, had spent a day really struggling with this, and that's where this particular one came from.
Okay, great. Bonnie, I see your hand up, Bonnie Born.
Laura, the only thing I'd say, whether it's that definition that we adopt, which I don't necessarily have any issues with at all, or another definition, I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that our work has to go far beyond adopting a definition. We have to spend, so once we adopt a definition, we have to spend time talking about what does that mean, and what does that look like? What does it look like pre-K to 3? What does it look like 4 to 6? What does it look like 6 to 9? And what does it look like 7 through 12? My, my sense of equity, and I'm not presenting myself as someone who, who has a tremendous amount of, of academic experience with that topic, but my sense is, it's something we have to continually keep vibrant in our work. It's not like a one-time. It's not like, okay, we've developed a definition of equity, and we've charged Jean and the administration to make sure that our programs and our schools are, are offering equitable opportunity. I think it's something that is, that is ongoing, and the more that we discuss it, the better we understand it, and the more equitable our, our schools, our communities will become.
Barry's hand is up?
Bill, Bill had his hand up before me. Bill, did you have something?
Yeah. I sometimes wonder about having too many task forces with too many definitions, because we get caught up in wordsmithing, and forget what it is we were trying to accomplish. Why don't we just throw it out there and say, let's talk about tracking and how that discriminates against children. Let's talk about how vocational students are tracked into a lesser social status, if you will. Could we consider getting rid of the National Honor Society? A few little provocative questions of that sort, and get right at the issues in which we are discriminating.
I put that on the list. I, I'm just putting, drawing down everybody's thoughts at this point. Barry, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, I do believe that it's important that we talk about what we, how we define equity. Because like I said, I've been on the board for three years, and equity has always been in the conversation, but never spelled out and defined. I think, like I say, I don't think we did wrongful acts. I think we always tried to be equitable in how we made decisions and how we went forward. But we never really clearly said what equity was to us. And I think it's important, if we're going to develop a policy, which I also believe we should lead into, the definition should preface that. And when I look at this definition, I do, there is conversation we can have about it, because some of it is, is a little dangerous, I think, in, in the wording that's there. When we say that equity is the process for redistributing access, to me, that's, you know, access is opportunity. Redistributing, to me, kind of lends itself to disadvantaging someone in an effort to advantage someone else. If we looked at, at resources or opportunity as a fixed amount, and in order to get equity, you have to redistribute, I don't believe that's, that really achieves our goals for the district. I think that if there's groups of people that need more opportunity, or more access, in order to meet some standard or norm, then we should provide that additional opportunity or access, but not through redistribution, and not through disadvantaging someone else. That's one of my primary concerns. That's kind of, that's kind of the dirty work behind affirmative action.
Okay, I've written that down, thank you. I saw Barbara's hand up.
I put my hand up, and then I put my hand down. I'm not sure. Well, no, I, I'll have it back up. I don't know if this, because we're talking about an equity policy, and because I have it in front of me here, I wanted to ask about the, the, the resolution that was adopted by the Vermont School Board Association at their October 29th meeting. And it was a resolution about equity and anti-racism, and I want to know if that should be somehow included, or to suggest that it be considered when we are drafting this, our own definition. I can, it's brief, and if you'd like, I can read it, or I could, I mean, I don't know if people have access to the, the resolution that the VSBA made.
If you, if it's brief, I can type it into the chat.
Oh, it, it, yes, it's, it's brief. Do, how do you want to go about that, Jean?
You'll have to say it, and I'll transcribe.
Oh, oh, I see, okay, I'll say it, you type, alright. The VSBA should demonstrate and promote the unequivocal collective responsibility for equitable and inclusive education environments.
Sorry, I got as far as unequivocal, is that right?
Yes, unequivocal.
What was after unequivocal?
Collect, lots of big words. Collective responsibility for equitable and inclusive education environments.
Thank you.
By recognizing.
Whoops.
Sorry, there's more. It's okay, it's, so you got recognizing, responding, and speaking out against injustice and racial inequity. It, and it then goes on to state two points in support of that goal, they, which they committed to doing, which I can just briefly say, or do you want to type it in?
Go ahead, I'll type it.
In, in support of this goal, the VSBA commits to the following. Number one, promote and support implicit bias training for all faculty and staff in Vermont Public Schools.
Hold on, say that one again, what's the first one?
Promote and support implicit bias training for all faculty and staff in Vermont Public Schools, including athletic and co-curricular personnel, and officials across the state. That maybe is a little bit more VSBA than us, the, the last part, but never mind, nevertheless. And two, number two, promote professional learning for school leaders and school board members that include, but not be limited to, equity literacy, curriculum audits, review protocols for examining bias in school policies and procedures, culturally responsive.
Bias, I stopped at bias.
In school policies and procedures. Culturally responsive instruction and school culture, student leadership and voice, and examining power and privilege in schools. Period. So, it sounded choppy, because I was reading it in pieces, but.
Okay, and just so folks know, the very first thing in the chat actually is the draft definition, but then it runs into, starting with the word VSBA, that's the VSBA resolution. Unfortunately, it did not separate it out, so it looks like a long, long thing. And VSBA resolution is the next three things. I think you'll figure it out, but at least you can see it.
Thank you for typing that Jean. So, my, my point being to consider some of that wording in what we are talking about when we talk about a draft of, now I've lost where my place was, a draft for our own equity policy.
Hey, that sounds like a good plan. I've added that. Rebecca, Becky?
Um, I just wanted to say, and Barbara sort of beat me to it, but I, I want the inclusion, the inclusive part. And I was just thinking about, again, we're doing school leaders and board members, how to have the staff who are actually with children all day, every day, also have more, you know, inclusive trainings as well.
Great, I've added that also. Okay. Anyone else want to share their thoughts and feelings about this, and where we should go with it?
One little.
Well, I heard people talking.
I raised my hand Lori.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think the statement's that short, and it's, it's also got tremendous amount to unpack. Lots of phrases like collective responsibility, and review protocols for examining bias. I mean, those are all, all code words in terms for much, much more involved ideas. And we've got to take a careful look at this. This is not something that we need to just adopt in a hurry, as a, you know, in a burst of enthusiasm for the idea of equity.
So, am I muted? No, I'm not, okay. So, you're right, we do need to take a careful look at this. However, we have been talking about this for the last three months in our second meeting, and I think that we should be ready as a board to at least start the conversation if we want to have an equity policy, or if we want to have a draft definition of an equity policy, I would like to hear what everybody else thinks as well.
Well, I'd like some of these phrases defined then.
Well, and that's okay, so when we get, you know, so let's, that's a good idea. So, but Bonnie, you have your hand raised?
I was actually, I was actually just going to connect a couple of dots between something that Bill said and something that Kevin said. I, I know that, that we won't do it tonight. I think it is, I think it's very important, whatever we ultimately end up adopting, that it does get unpacked, and we understand, okay, exactly what does this mean? I think the other standard we have to hold ourselves to, because that's when I believe it's really going to start to count, is when we get to the level that Bill was talking about, the programmatic level. Okay, what does this look like in our schools? What impact does this have on National Honor Society? What is, impact does this have on, you know, driver's ed? What impact does this have on? So, I, I'm not saying that adopting the policy isn't important, I'm not saying that we don't have to be careful about the phrases that we include in our policy, but I guess I'm just restating, for me, the change is only going to come when we actually start talking about regularly and frequently, whatever it is that we put in this policy. How does it translate? How does it change the organizational structure of our schools?
It's a very good point.
Bill had his hand up earlier, I don't know if he still wants to speak.
Okay.
It's off the point a little bit, but Barry had used some terms about having equal apply to all, and that's called horizontal equity, and vertical equity is giving the kid what that kid needs, which may vary between this one and that one. Esoteric knowledge there, I'm sure we can use somewhere.
Eric's hand is up?
Yep, go ahead.
This reminds me of, largely of my 30 years career in special education.
Because the the civil rights law in 1976 granted equal access and some equity for students with disabilities. And it went on to create some disjointed incrementalism and development of all kinds of support services and created a dual system. It's not necessarily the best. But it was an attempt to get at equity and redistribution of access was brought up and and that's always been an issue in special education. Where we talk about equity is equity is not equal. Equity is is what is the student need and 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 what is fair? And fair is not necessarily equal. So we we do look at that. We look at that carefully and we struggle with those issues and well meaning people define and and operate on on some of these concepts very differently. And we have to keep talking about it and we have to keep bringing people in to the conversation and and not push people out of that. So it's just an observation. It's hard work.
I'm looking to see if anybody else has their hand up or has wants to speak.
Bill does.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Just a one liner. Derek also just brought up something that I think is important. The legacy of reform is the bureaucratic state. And when you define special education that way is that in the interest of good things, we built up a huge bureaucracy to make it happen and to freeze it into place. That's a great danger.
Okay. So I'm looking at what everyone said. And anyone can jump in here if they want. Couple of people would like us to think about an equity policy. But other people have brought up the fact that if we had an equity policy, we could get ourselves, you know, we could lock ourselves in. I think that's what people are trying to say. But all we really want to do is just make sure that our kids have what they need. All kids have what they need. But we got to start somewhere. So I'm going to look to you guys to tell me where that somewhere is. Kevin.
I think Bill made a profoundly important point about the bureaucratic state. Unlike a place like Chicago, what we have here is that we know each other. I'm looking around the screen now. I've known Barbara for 20 years. I've known Bill for many years. Been friends with Greg for a long time. Our kids play on the same teams. Mike lives around the corner for me. I first met Derek when when our children were in a playgroup, probably 17 years ago. Jen, I've known for many, many years, love her children. Angela, I see in church. Laurie, I see you in church. I've known you guys for a long time. We don't want to create a bureaucratic state that that takes away the personal nature of life in Vermont. And I don't think we want to create a system where our teachers are handcuffed. So that's 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 a great danger that we need to keep in mind. And I I agree with Bill wholeheartedly.
Barbara, you have your hand up.
I'm happy to let other people talk. I just had another thing to add. I just let us not lose sight of why we began the discussion about race and equity. At our June meeting, we decide, we agreed as a board to take up the issue. And anti racism work is being done all over the country in school districts, police departments, churches, colleges, corporations. And ultimately, it involves individual work for all called to do. It's important work, it's difficult work, and it's work that cannot wait. Dismantling systems of inequity takes hard work. And as people who are committed to serving students of the district, we ourselves have to be students. Like any students of a new subject, we're being asked to examine our own knowledge and our own ignorance. Regardless of how much education we've had and how much expertise we have in certain areas, we're all being asked to be open to the possibility that we still have much to learn. It's important work, it's difficult work, it's work that cannot wait. We live in a district in a state that is notably lacking in ethnic and racial diversity. We are charged with ensuring the equitable education of all students. If a student of color is in a tiny minority, perhaps a minority of one, we cannot expect that the burden falls to them and their family to self advocate. So it's our job to do some of that work for them so that they get the equitable education too. It's important work, it's difficult work, and it's work that cannot wait.
Bonnie. For.
Did you say me, Lori?
Yeah, I did. I realized I said Bonnie and didn't differentiate. So yes, you.
Okay, thank you. I I just want to add on or extend something that Kevin said as he was as he was going around the room, talking about all the various connections he has. And each of us on this board could go around and and talk about those same connections. I think it, I think the point he made is is vitally important in that this is, this is hard work. It's also work that could that could divide us. And I think that would be a a tremendous shame. Every single one of us came to this board thinking that we had something to offer that could somehow make our school system a better place for youngsters. And I'm just, I I my heart's warmed by just this little bit of a conversation we've had that it's inclusive of all of our opinions, that nobody is boxing anyone out. And I think one thing I'm certain of is that we won't do this work well if indeed we don't continue to to act respectfully towards one another. And I just wanted to say that even this little bit of discussion we've had tonight gives me hope that we will be able to do this difficult work and ultimately end up in a place where we have increased opportunities for all of our youngsters.
Thank you, Bonnie. I think that's all of our hopes.
Barry has his hand.
Okay.
Just one quick one. When I proposed earlier that I think that it would be to our benefit to pursue a policy with respect to equity, I still believe that. And and I would not look to put a bureaucratic process in place. Hopefully, we can avoid such a thing. And I would not look to pigeonhole or back us into a corner on anything. Hopefully, we can avoid that as well. I just feel as though we're a policy governance board. And by developing a policy with respect to equity, it kind of lays down our expectations and accountabilities to ourselves and to the superintendent and and the district as as how we feel about equity and what what our expectations are. I don't think it's a harmful thing to do. I think it's the beginning of something that could grow and and move forward. I kind of align with Barbara in in her feelings that it it's our obligation to do that. We are a school board. We oversee the operations of our district and I and I feel as though we should be looking out for the the growth and development of that district. So again, it doesn't have to be today, doesn't have to be soon. But I think at some point, we should really pursue a policy with respect to equity. And it gives Jean a basis or a foundation on on how she should move forward and what our expectations of her would be. That's all I have to say.
Laurie, you have a community member, Jen Philo, who is asking to be recognized.
Sure, go ahead, Jen.
Good evening, everybody. I'm so sorry. I just realized that the public portion had not started yet, so my my apologies. Thank you for for letting me speak. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jen Philo. I'm a resident of Brandon. And my youngest child goes to Outer Valley. He's a senior this year. I want to echo a lot of what what Bonnie had said. And also into respect in respect to to Kevin's statement that he had sent, which I did have a chance to to look at before the meeting. And I I've been attending the Rutland High School Board meetings, the Mill River School Board meetings, the Mount Anthony School Board meetings, as well as the Board of Alderman meetings in Rutland. And I can tell you that when you start the process of anti racism work, a lot of times associated with with Black Lives Matter, there's a visceral reaction in the community. And I've seen it happen on all of these school boards. So I think it's really important that we're very thoughtful about this process. I think Kevin's on point when he says we need to define a lot of what we have in arguably what could maybe be a mission statement. I guess, is that sort of what we're working towards as a a mission statement?
That hasn't been defined yet.
That has not. Okay, okay. That might be a good first step, actually. And then just my my honest opinion there. But I just, again, it's it's not a criticism of anything. It's just we do need to be mindful because this can cause a lot of animosity within the community. And right now, we're not even doing anything controversial per se, you know. This is specifically for the school board, but when we do open this up to a student population, that's when you start seeing a lot of pushback. So we definitely want to be very thoughtful about this whole process. And inclusive.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. I really appreciate your comments. Thank you. Looking to see if anybody else has their hand up or wants to say anything.
One other thing here, and I'll try to be quiet, is that I think we've really backed into a key principle here, and I think it's consensus in that you're saying every kid should get what that kid needs as opposed to everybody gets the same thing. And that's a very important principle. Because it would mean that some kids would get more than others, but that's to even the playing field. But that might be controversial in with some people. But it's an important concept and if we endorse it, we need to stick with it.
So Jean, can I ask you a question? And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but maybe I am a little bit.
Yep.
As far as if whatever we decide to do as a board, we would be directing you to to play that out in all of our schools. Do you feel right now that this would be helpful? I'm not, I'm not sure. Would this be helpful to you to help us make sure that our kids aren't getting lost in the system? You know, I always keep thinking back to where we have, you know, no student left behind. And so we're pushing kids through and we don't want to be doing that anymore. We really want to make sure that they're getting what they need.
Sure. I I think what would be very helpful for the district as a whole is if the board would commit to a value of equity as you choose to define it for this district. And then perhaps, and that could be by policy or by definition, as you prefer. And then perhaps identified the metrics, some of the metrics by which you'd like to see that play out. And I think Bill, Bill's first statement kind of identified some of those metrics, looking at who's taking what classes, making sure that opportunities are available for all, and then also who's taking it. I think that we do have policies and practices that unintentionally exclude some students. One simple one that is actually still amazes me that it still happens, and I don't think it'll happen this year, is we have gender based colors for graduation gowns. Again, thank you very much, Greg, for raising a a wonderful young lady who who chose to buck that trend. You know, why why are we doing that? We have other practices and programs. And certainly, I can move forward with making those changes anyway, but I think it's powerful to the community if if the board wished to at least acknowledge that an inclusiveness of all of our students and a culture that that includes all students, both in policies, practices, and behaviors.
Okay. So we've heard from a lot of you. We haven't heard from some of you. Don't want to call out all board members, but those board members who haven't said anything, like Greg Bernhardt, who just raised his hand, go right ahead.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
So, yeah, I I I've been listening to what everybody's been saying and you know, I'm having trouble trying to figure out what the policy should look like. I think if our goal is inclusivity and for people to feel you know, what the end goal for the students is, I feel like we should have language that is not going to be divisive in any way. I definitely, you know, appreciate a lot of the thoughts Barbara and Claire brought up. And I I definitely think a lot of that important work, but I also do see Kevin's point. So I'm sort of, you know, I kind of appreciate our board right now. I like the diversity on our board and I like all these viewpoints. And and I think that you know, the goal is we don't want kids to ever feel humiliated or, you know, you know, we don't want to create a policy that creates divisiveness where people feel, you know, like Jennifer Philo is bringing up, like, we don't want people ultimately to feel uncomfortable, although it's uncomfortable work.
Oh, Greg, Greg, we can't hear you. Because he just froze.
And I think I'm freezing up.
There you are again.
So, yeah, I I'm thinking a lot. So sorry, I haven't really come up with a concise statement yet, but I appreciate everybody's perspectives. So that's it.
Well, I wonder, Barbara, I saw your hand up and then it went down, but I just, I'm going to ask a question of everyone because I think Greg brought up a good point. He said, he, Greg, you mentioned something about your, about our goal. And so maybe that's where we need to start. What is our goal? And then that may turn us into, what do we want in a policy? Do we want this? Do we want that? So maybe if we can wrap our head around a goal tonight of what we want for our kids, then that will take us down a path that could that could work for us. Does everybody, anybody have anything to say about that? Is that a good place to start?
So if you did that, a leading question for you to consider might be, what should what type of culture and practices would you like the Outer Valley Unified Union School District to have? What would that look like?
If if we were to go around the room and say, Ari, what's what's everybody's thoughts on goals for the for exactly what Jean just said and Laurie just said? Jean, can somebody try and take those notes and try and bring it together into a into a statement or into a comment or try, like, just to get us started to say, all right, this is what everybody's thoughts were, and this is a draft of a mission statement or whatever you want to call it. And then we can go from there on trying to. And then we can go from there on trying to figure out what next steps are. Just a thought.
We can try.
Barbara, you have your hand raised?
I just couldn't help but notice on Angela's point that Allison Popa is on this Zoom. She's been known to do a good job with that every once in a while. Just throwing that out there.
So I think that means that Allison Popa just got elected to do all this.
Hi, Allison. Miss you. Miss you.
You all too.
There's your pretty face.
I was going to say she disappeared, but she turned around.
Yes, I'm happy to take the notes. And then, you know, we can have that sort of drilled down. I'll see how quickly, depending on what the comments are, okay? I don't want to overcommit myself here, but no problem. I'll be on that.
All right. Thank you, Allison. So I think what I will do is just go down the list of.
I'm not, I don't understand what we just did, what Allison's about to do for us.
So based on what Angela just said, Angela asked if we could go around the room to each board member and ask them what their goal is in regards to what they want for students. What's the goal? What is our goal around? So that every child has equity. I believe that's what we're looking for. Correct? Anybody else see that differently? Did I say that right, Angela? Angela's saying yes. So what is our goal?
Lori, can I, it's Allison. Can I ask one question? So is it supposed to be sort of overarching and generic or specific?
I would like it to be as specific as possible, I think.
Could you give an example?
So here's mine. I'll go first. So my goal is that all kids receive the, I don't want to say education that they need, but that they receive all the tools that they need in order to pursue the passion that they might have for whatever so that they can do that work after high school. Whether that's college or whether that's a trade, whether that's whatever. I will be really specific and say that my 11-year-old son, for the last six years of his life, all he's ever talked about is being a fireman. And so I want to make sure that he has all of the items that he needs in his toolbox so that by the time he graduates Outer Valley, he will either be able to go directly into the Fire Academy or he can go to college and do whatever he needs for fire science. Or he can join the military and get all of that there and then come back and be a fireman. I don't know. But those are the, that's my goal for him. And that would be my goal for every single child. And provide opportunities for our kids to be able to figure it out what their life's passion is. Because I think that we have a lot of, I think a lot of us go through school thinking that we want one thing and then finding out it was something else. Or we just don't have any clue. We get to college and, you know. That's my goal. As simplistic as it might be. So can we go around the room? Is that kind of, is that okay? Allison, are you okay with that?
Yeah, no, that's very helpful. I guess the only other thing I would like to say is I think it's probably best, and you can let me know, Lori, if everybody just sort of states what their goals are. And then, you know, we can determine how to, like Angela said, sort of sort through it and see what sort of sifts to the top, you know, and then figure out from there. And I don't know if that would be accomplished tonight or what, but I'll take notes.
Okay, that sounds great. So I'm going to just go down by the list of participants so that it's in no, well, thank you. Greg, you raised your hand.
You know, I always see things through the perspective of the kids, or at least I try. And I think back to my own time in high school. And I think my goal ultimately is, you know, especially children. You know, they, you know, they don't have always a lot of confidence in whatever it is that they're doing, whatever the task is. So my goal is to create an environment where teachers, coaches, people are trying to build up the confidence in our kids to feel like they can succeed in whatever they want. And if we have systems or people or just things happening that bring down kids' confidence, whether it's the way we, you know, other kids are disrespecting kids or language that's being used or culture or whatever it is, I think we want to create an environment where nobody is having the confidence in themselves hindered as they're trying to be educated. So whether it's class issues, whether it's sexism against girls or sexism against boys or racial disparities, whatever it is, I think all of it, we need something very inclusive that tackles all of that. So it's not pinpointed on one thing. Because, you know, from a kid's perspective, if we don't, if we don't tackle all of it, I just don't think they'll buy into it. We just, we need to create a conversation where everybody feels included. And anyway, so I don't know if that sums up my goal.
Sounds good. Thank you. How about you, Bill? What's your goal for kids?
Every kid gets their piece, their slice of the American pie. Think about it. It's their piece.
Okay. Angela?
Oh, I always have difficulties trying to sum up my thoughts into one big statement. But I second pretty much everybody already that's already spoke. If I was to add anything, I would say, and maybe this is too specific, but back to what I was saying in the beginning of the meeting. And it's probably the same thing as you, Lori, where whatever the, whatever the child's end goal is or whatever the child's path is, to make sure that we continue to move them forward and to move them in the directions that they want. I think, I think we have a lot of work in the elementary school on this. Not, I think, I think high school, I'm sure there's room to grow. But I think we do better because then the paths start to kind of get laid out in high school. But in elementary, I think some of the, some of the gifted students get left behind. And I would like to see gifted students keep pushing forward as well as no child left behind. I just want everybody, all students, to be equally educated throughout the process, K through 12.
Okay. Barbara?
I, I mean, what I'm hearing sounds like the same goals that I have in mind. I feel the need to keep my, whatever, finger on the pulse of anywhere that the conversation that's going on everywhere that concerns race doesn't get overlooked because we have the ability to overlook it more so than a lot of other places. But it's part, it's all rolled up into the equity piece that we're talking about. And what people have said so far, I am on board with those, those goals.
Okay. Barry?
Well, I guess I'm a little bit lost in what we're doing. I, I'm okay with that, though. I agree with a lot of the thoughts that have come out. I thought, in my, in my mind, as a group, as a district, we already have goals for ourselves, and they're good ones. And to me, that's the what, the what piece of what our goal is. I thought the equity conversation was the how piece of achieving those goals. So I still align with our original goals for the district. But I think the sentiments that Greg kind of shared around inclusiveness of all students should be part of the how piece of how we achieve those goals. But I appreciate all the thoughts everyone's had so far. They've all been great.
Okay. Bonnie Born?
Lori, my thoughts have all been said by someone else. I really don't have anything new to add. I think we're on the right track. The only observation I'd make is I think we ought to keep it, I'm a minimalist when it comes to these things, so we ought to keep it short and sweet. And it ought to be something that's understood by everyone and not filled with jargon.
That's a good point. Bonnie C., I know if you want to just send me a message, there it is. There it is. Bonnie C. wants, she wrote it in the chat, but she says equal opportunity for all, working to always improve and staying open-minded when hearing where we can improve, staying approachable. It's her goal. Thank you very much for that, Bonnie. Derek?
I would hope that we can ultimately teach all kids how to learn and how to participate in their own learning and not, and not be dependent on the adults for being fed information so that they can be successful learners throughout their lifetime.
You'd like to see them be independent and follow through on what they want and what they need. Cool.
How to, learn how to learn.
Yeah. Great. Kevin Thornton? Kevin?
I'm of two minds about the process. I think, on the one hand, anybody who works with kids or is a parent or works with people in general knows that different people need different types of motivation, they need different types of encouragement, they need different types of support. So I'm fully on board with that idea. But my, frankly, my goal for this right now is that we don't make things worse. I don't think we've defined the problem. For instance, I've been long concerned about North Campus that ever since Foxcar Farm went under, I wondered if that's a warehouse for kids. We don't talk about the specifics. We tend to be pie in the sky. I mean, I think these VSBA statements are pretty useless. A phrase like examine power and privilege in schools have made it clear that I think that's a form of indoctrination and that it's contrary to free speech principles. So I think we need to be very, very careful in how we do this and how we define it. And I agree with Bonnie's point that it's got to be simple and short and sweet. The language that the ed schools produce and that the ABSBA produces is just, it's terrible prose and it's, it's, it's just a bureaucratic morass, in my opinion. So we need to do better than what they're offering us. I think we just reproduce what they give us. We're going to be making a big mistake.
Okay, but do you have a goal that has not already been said that you want to make sure? Might get into that?
Yeah, that we don't make things worse and that we define our problems.
Okay. Thank you. Becky?
I was hoping you'd call me before this baby wakes up. Articulation sometimes is difficult for me. So let's see, the things I'm thinking are, I, a goal is that all children feel, are given the opportunity to learn at their, their best potential and feel included and safe in doing so.
Okay. That makes sense. We definitely want to make sure kids feel safe, students feel safe. Anyone else? So I called out all the board members. I will open it up to other participants. If you have something that hasn't been heard, hasn't been said that you think we should contemplate as our goal, speak up. Okay.
Hi.
Yeah.
I, I think it's really important that children understand, learn and experience what it is to feel respect and to give respect and have a sense of kind of civic responsibility that even though kids are in their developmental stages, that there is still something outside of them that they can impact, that they can contribute to. I just think that's part of building community. And I don't think you can ever start that at too early an age. We can learn that in a healthy way in our families and in our communities. And I think school is a wonderful place to learn that. It's very empowering for many kids.
Thank you, Claire. I think that's a really good point. Anyone else?
Lori, you muted yourself, I think.
Oh, I did. Sorry.
I thought possibly you were counting.
Um, so what I said, and I made a joke, was I asked Allison what she came up with already because she should have had something by now. But I was only kidding. So, and it doesn't, it doesn't melt at the second time.
Do you want me to copy and paste that into the comments? Or what is easiest for everybody to be able? Because I honestly feel like I can do whatever is helpful, I guess, is what I.
Whatever works for you. I'll leave that up to you.
Well, I'll put them in there. I just put names and then what each person said. I don't know. Are you planning to have further discussion now? Or, because what I'm seeing, honestly, is that everyone seems to be pretty much on the same page about sort of the overarching. And, you know, from here, like Bonnie said, we sort of need some specifics to meet that. So whether that's training or, you know, whatever that looks like, you know, that Jean can then consider and be able to actually, you know, implement that and report back. So what do you see as the next step, Lori?
I'm sorry, I was giving my daughter a hug. They're leaving. So that's a good question, I think, that I want to put out to the whole board. I know Barry said he was a little confused as to what we were doing. And my thought was, is by, the goal was around this particular topic. And what is our goal in talking about this topic? And what is it that we want for our kids? And I think all of you had great points. And I appreciate that you were forthright with them. At this point, I, I almost feel like we need to dig in deeper to that stuff to find out exactly how that might be done in schools. You know, I think it makes a lot of sense that we, you know, show respect and that we give respect to kids, to students, and that they learn how to give respect back. I, you know, I don't know. So I'm a loss. So I'm looking to the rest of you as to where we go from here. What makes sense? Angela, you've got your hand raised.
So where we go from here is now we got to decide, now that we got everybody's opinions on what our goals should be, now we got to put it into action. You know, what is the next action? Are we making a policy? Are we making a mission statement? Are we doing, I don't know all this policy governance language. So are we? doing, I don't know all this policy governance language. So are we doing the top level? Ends policy. Are we adding something to an ends policy to cover all these goals? Are we, you know, what, what is the next, yeah, what is the next action? Where, where do we go from? I guess that's, yeah.
So I would say that I don't think a mission statement makes sense because you'd write a mission statement and then you'd throw it in a box and forget about it and dig it out when it was convenient. I think it needs to be something that we live by. So maybe it needs to be part of our ends policy because that is where that's the, that global ends policy that we have is the policy that we want all of our students to have these forms of equity and everything that they need. But that's just my opinion. And Becky, you have your hand raised.
I feel like it's time for us maybe to do more research and look at this, you know, look at the survey that the youth survey that comes out around safety and things like that. Ask students, what is, what is equity and inclusion look like and feel like to them? How would they like it to be? I mean, I just feel like we can ask our whole community and really, I mean, this is a chance to really understand what people in our community want. Instead of us telling people and trying to define it, I think if we ask, you know, a pool of people, I mean, whoever wants to do that. We might have a better understanding on, especially students, you know, what's it like to be a student and, and not feel included or have equity. So, yeah, I think that's a good idea, Jean. I'm reading your thing about doing a thought exchange. Anyway, I just feel like it shouldn't, we shouldn't start it and end it without asking everybody else.
Okay. Angela, you've got your hand raised.
I, I just wanted to ask Becky, is that getting too, surveys are always great, especially for the student body. I would never say no to that. But is that getting too far down and into the dirt? Isn't that what, what we're trying to say policy governance is and that we should stick to the high level? We need to try and stay out of solving the problem, right? And like Jean solved the problem, we just need to tell her, we're just trying to give her correction, right?
Jean just said the student voice can be part of the data. So that she gives us. So I don't think that's getting too weedy because the students are actually part of our stakeholders. So we can go out and get community input and that would, they would be part of that voice.
Yeah, I'm not saying not do the survey. I was just asking Becky a question.
Can I answer that?
Yeah, go for it.
Where I work, I work with students who haven't had equity in their lives and don't feel included and hear all sorts of things that, you know, teachers do unintentionally. Where other students do things very intentionally. And I just feel like if we heard some of that stuff, that I don't think it's getting too weedy because what we're trying to do is come up with. You can't come up with a solution without knowing what the problem is. Does that make sense? And so, and I'm not saying we're creating a solution. I'm just saying you can't come up with, I don't know, I just feel like we can't come up with like, here's our because I agree with Barry, that it's not necessarily a, may be a policy that being for, but more of a like or an extension to a policy. What are we doing the things that we're going to say we're going to do? And, and, and how do you know what your need, where your ship needs to be steered if you're not sure where you're going? Is that too vague?
Well, Jean did say in the chat that she says, ultimately, your ends policy needs to include how you want to steer the district. Which you kind of said the same thing. You know, where are we steering the ship? And the way we figure out how we steer the ship is by looking at our ends policy. I think, in policy governance, which Barry just gave me the thumbs up, I think. He did twice. Wow. Okay, so.
Just for clarification, can Becky tell us where she works?
Oh, Becky, do you feel comfortable doing that?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I work at the Addison County Parent Child Center. So I work with students who who live in extreme poverty, students who have not felt safe because of their race or because of their sexual identity. All sorts of, all of the things that we're sort of looking at and touching on are the students I work with.
Okay, thank you.
Derek, I saw your hand up. Did you want to say something?
Yes, thank you. At the beginning of this last conversation, you said that we wanted, that, that you wanted to go into some more specifics versus a, the large, the big picture. And I just wanted to redirect Kevin's statement. He included at the end, a couple of actions that, that we could take in terms of focusing on specific things. The question then becomes, is that our purview or, or not? Because it, it also seems like it's getting into you know, operations and when, when we're talking about relationships with students and relationships with faculty and programmatic issues like restorative justice, which are all really important and good things. How do we impact those specifics? I guess is my question.
So I think my question is what were the, can you remind me of what the two things were that Kevin, his action items were based on your notes? And what your thought is on that?
I've got them here if you want.
Yeah. Go ahead, Kevin.
First, I'll give the, just the short versions. We require the superintendent to create a system through which our anti bullying policies, anti bullying policies are strictly and uniformly enforced. And second, institute along with the disciplinary rules suggested above procedures that emphasize restorative justice with a goal always of personal and community reconciliation. And then I had a third goal that hasn't been mentioned that I, teachers got terrible historical training about Martin Luther King and they need, they need to read why we can't wait in its entirety. At least get a better lecture than what they got.
Kevin, could you repeat the second one for me?
Yeah. It's in, it's in the statement, but yeah, institute along with the disciplinary rules suggested above. That would be number one. Procedures that emphasize restorative justice with a goal always of personal and community reconciliation.
Okay, Greg, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I, I also agree with Derek. I think that you know, some of the points Kevin makes in his actions, you know, does address what we're trying to get at. The only thing that always frustrates me is whenever we say, you know, to strictly enforced anti bullying stuff like, you know, bullying is like this legal term and, you know, to prove what bullying is, like to get there, like I want to go before bullying. I want this to be because the thing is if it's always, we're waiting till it's this legal definition of what bullying is, it's like there's so much crap that happens, sorry to use that word, before you get to actual bullying. Like if we could just address like just basic human respect and like really somehow create a culture of respect well before bullying, you know, and, and so I just, I don't want to get lost in the bullying word, you know, and I just think that kids, you know, themselves, you know, we may be strictly enforcing both anti bullying stuff, but the kids themselves, as we see in the survey and I have kids and we all do, they all complain that the culture of the way kids treat each other or even teachers or coaches for that matter sometimes really makes kids feel awful about themselves. And that's what I was trying to get about the confidence thing. I don't want that. I don't want kids' confidence being destroyed by other kids or other adults. And I think it needs to start well before bullying. So that would be my only note.
So a zero tolerance policy essentially is what you might be talking about as far as the way we treat.
It's not to be, it's not to be like mean or punitive. I mean, a, and I do think we as all adults, I mean, all of us, even us, like we all need to say something when we see people making somebody else feel bad about themselves. And, and so I think that we can't just, you know, allow just one little thing go. We're all, most of us have been parents. Like if you get, if you get permissive about it, you know, you create a culture in your home where kids feel like they can act a certain way, but you, you really do need to create that, that culture of respect. And you have to, as an adult, exemplify it all the time. And we can't be afraid to, to stand up all the time. And, and it's, it's a difficult process, but I think that would address everything we're after ultimately, but it's, I don't know how to get there. But I just want to stay away from the definition of bullying because we may be doing a good job with dealing with bullying, but I want to do a good job with the respect well before bullying. So I don't know if my point is made, but.
No, I think, I think you're, I, I understand where you're coming from. I, I think that's a really good point. And Angela even agrees with you. She just gave you the thumbs up. Bonnie Born.
Yes, this would just further support Greg's point. There, there's a lot, there's a lot in the literature that speaks to how much damage is done to youngsters well before behaviors rise to the bullying level. Just the basic poor behavior disrespect. Blatant meanness that goes on prior to something rising to the level of, you know, the legal status of bullying. So I'm, this is just a long way around saying that I, I am agreeing with Greg that we need to figure out and make sure we're very clearly addressing all of those behaviors well, well before they rise to the level of bullying.
Okay. Barbara?
Jean, you had your hand up. I don't know if you were trying to say something. You can go, do you want to go first? If that's okay. As host, I don't get a blue hand to raise.
There's a reason for that. No.
And so Bill probably doesn't either because I made him co-host. I don't think he gets a blue hand either.
That's funny.
You could also remove people, Bill, but I will. No, Bill. So, gosh, what was I going to say? I think that you came to a lot of similar place in all of your goals. I mean, it sounds to me like you really want a district that makes sure that, well, it's basically what your ends policy says, that all students are empowered with blah, blah, blah. And you were very clear in that when you wrote your global ends, that you want all students with knowledge, skills and attributes needed to be successful and contributing citizens of a global society by way of the resources invested. So it feels to me like the goal go around fits exactly in there already. What's not in there, and maybe it's subsumed, is equity. And one way that you could do it is looking at your global executive constraint 2.0 and build it into, into there, which is that the superintendent should not cause or allow any practice, activity, decision or organizational circumstance that is inequitable, unlawful, unsafe, imprudent. And then I then need to report out on that to you by identifying a lot of the practices that you spoke of here, looking at discipline, looking at restorative practices, looking at AP enrollment. You know, bringing you a variety of metrics that way. That's what I thought was.
It's a really good thought. I guess I'm glad you did speak. And it brought me to, so I have a question for you, Jean. And Angela, I know your hand is raised, but I just want to ask her this first. Even if we didn't change anything in our policies or we put the word inequitable into your 2.0, without getting into the weeds, what is it that you would need from us in order to make sure that equity is something that start, you know, so that our school administration, so that our teachers, so that our students realize that this is something that the board finds very, very important and that we want to make sure that it starts happening, that this culture that we want to see happens.
So first of all, you should know I'm not waiting for you to figure this out. I mean, you've already given me a charge that says all students need the knowledge, skills and attributes to be contributing students. So in that sense, that's already there. It's already in your ends. You're not excluding anybody. And I, I believe to what Greg says, the part about contributing citizens also speaks to the respect piece and, and building a culture of respect and acceptance of everyone. What, what I'm not sure, but that's, that's my interpretation of the policy you've given me. What's not as explicit to the school community or the broader community is your value around equity. And maybe it doesn't have to be something that you write or you say. This, this also kind of all started with VSBA bringing out that draft equity policy, which is also in your packet. And that started with VSBA. You know, maybe, maybe you don't need to do that. Maybe it's just simply I, as part of my ends reporting, I start bringing some of that data and keep it in the forefront for, for the discussions that way. And you can decide that. You can say tonight, okay, everything's solved now and go forth and bring us information. Or you can make an explicit statement, which doesn't have to be a policy at all. It could also just be a statement. So I don't know if I answered your question, Lori.
Sort of. Angela?
I'm gonna try and, try and say this correctly. We have had this global ends policy going on two years now. I know probably it's only been in, in in complete force for maybe a year, a year and a half or.
A year, last November.
Year. But I know some of the concerns that have been brought up tonight. Some of them are personal and some of them, the community is already feeling it and some of them, the board members are already feeling it. So how do we, I mean, yes, we do have, I saw Allison posted the, the current ends, which is great. And I agree, it has a lot of the stuff that we're trying to cover in it. I'm still not clear on how we, how we get to our concerns into the policies so that you can do the measurements. You can do, you can show us that you're making progress or you're working on it or you're, or you know, things, things are changing to, to get to the direction to where the board would love the district to be. Does that make sense? I have a hard time explaining what my thoughts are. You're on mute, Jean.
Okay, is this better? Underneath your global ends policy, you have the three different areas, the knowledge, the transferable skills and the attributes. You know, maybe it's, it's spending some time talking about each one of those three areas and what's in your policy and, and having a, a conversation about what, what does that look like? For example, again, back to what Greg was saying, we have respect, kindness, compassion, self-confidence. What are some of the metrics that the board would like to see around that? We have responsible and involved citizenship. Um, we have responsible and involved citizenship. Um, you know, what are some metrics around that? And then obviously we have the knowledge areas. Last week when I brought, or last meeting when I brought the Adventum report, that had to do more with the 1.1, the knowledge areas. It was an interim report on math literacy and um, language arts. But maybe it's digging into the 1.2 and 1.3, which might be where this falls more. And having a board discussion about identifying some of, you know, what, what Kevin said about the restorative practices and HH being, being strictly enforced, kind of falls under that respect, kindness, resiliency and involve citizenship as well. So maybe it's capturing those things.
Kevin?
I just wanted to make clear that I didn't use the word bullying as a term of art, but in the colloquial sense. So everything Greg said, which I thought was very moving, uh, is, uh, is implied in that. And it's not just about punishing, it's about creating this culture. So I don't want us to, to feel like I've made some kind of proposal about uh, the, uh, the legal definition of bullying, because I haven't. And frankly, I didn't think about that at all. I want to use the word.
If you, if you like that idea, I could come to you the next time you schedule this conversation with some suggestions of my own of what data systems might exist under each of these things to feed your conversation, what's missing, um, if you wanted to go that route.
Derek, is that a question?
Yeah, well, a comment, I, I'd like to respond to that. I would like you to do that.
Okay, I'll do it just for you, Derek.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if other board members, I mean, you, you tossed out a question, so I'm answering.
Absolutely. I'm always for more measurements and more ways to, to get the data out so, so we can see that there's being that, that improvements are being made.
Can I ask or say something?
Yeah, go ahead, Becky.
Um, I think data is great, but what do we do with it? So we have the data from student, I mean, I know Jean's gonna look at different things. So we have the survey from students that say they don't feel safe. And what have we done to change that? So that's my next, like, data's great, but what do we do with it?
Um, Jen Filo, I saw your hand kind of go up and you must want to say something, so please do.
I do, I'm so sorry. Um, I was just curious how you plan to validate the survey. Is that something you need to worry about? I just know from personal experience through NAACP, uh, validating the survey, surveys is, is difficult, so.
So if you're talking about the survey that I mentioned earlier, it's not that someone else called a survey and then I called it a thought exchange?
Yeah.
It's not actually a survey in the sense that it's an interactive tool to capture people's thoughts. It doesn't need to be validated. What happens is people put in their thoughts and then they rank everybody else's thoughts so that you get a sense of what rises to the top for this community.
Oh, interesting. Okay, thank you for clarifying. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, I guess I'm gonna ask a question, Jean, that kind of gets in the weeds, so, um, but I'm gonna ask it anyway.
Okay.
How does? So we have, we have a plan in place as far as if um, something happens in school, we always tell the, the family to go to the teacher and then to the principal and then to you and then to us. That's the, that's the way that that policy works. However, we seem to have a culture in Outer Valley and, and I don't want to say this always happens, but I feel like um, people stop after the second cog. They, they've gone to the teacher, they don't feel that they've been heard, they go to the principal, maybe they've sort of been heard, but then, you know, nothing really changes or they don't, they still don't feel good about it. And so instead of going on to you, or instead of um, doing something about it, they just go, well, nobody cares. And they kind of, then they start boo hooing the, the school or the district or, or whatever. And so in this concept that we're talking about with equity, I feel like something needs to happen in order to make sure that people don't lose the ability to bring forth their issues. Does, does, and maybe I'm not saying that really clearly, but I feel like if we want there to be equitable treatment of everyone, we somehow have to make sure that families feel like they're heard and that, you know, not necessarily that we can change what's happening or that um, we can give them what they want, but just that they, you know, understand why things are happening. Does that make sense at all?
Yes, and for that to happen, families have to come forward. Um, for some, being heard means being agreed with. And that necessarily, you know, so there is no way to get past that. For others, being heard means being heard. Somebody understands your question and explains where it is. And I, I try to do that basically with every parent email I sent out on Friday and the, the 15 to 45 responses that I get. Um, you know, it's responsiveness, it's taking the time to really understand the question. We have some metrics through the use of let's talk. Um, but it doesn't capture, if somebody doesn't go beyond the principle, it may not be captured, it wouldn't be captured. And for the school administrator and even perhaps the teacher, something that sounds just like a question to the person receiving it, might have been something more to the person saying it. So even asking people, I mean, administrators, for example, get questions all day long.
Sure.
And can't always differentiate for the questioner, whether or not the questioner felt heard in their question. Um, it, it's just, I don't, I don't know how to have full metrics on that, except to encourage people to use let's talk and to use the entire process. And the reason I mentioned let's talk is because let's talk could look at trends and the types of things being asked. It gives us feedback, which generally connects to how a person felt, whether or not they were heard. Um, it's, it's a tool that could be used for metrics.
Okay. Barbara, you have your hand raised?
So something's weird with my computer, so if I disappear, I apologize. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Barbara.
Okay. Um, so to what Jean was just saying, because this is a, this area in particular is one that I've spent a little bit of time thinking about. I'm sure we all have, so, uh, but just, I recently have been pondering this and thinking, uh, you know, um, we, um, certain people are, are just simply better at following that chain right up the, uh, right up to the top if they have um, an issue, a complaint, a problem. And then some folks, you know, don't. And uh, what just occurred to me as you were talking, Jean, is that some of that is actually cultural or social. I mean, it can be, therein can lie some of the um, inequity that we're trying to tackle. It's that there could be people who have a problem, an issue, a situation, and culturally it is not, um, it is much more difficult um, that, that they feel comfortable going up to the top. So I don't know what, I don't have an answer, but it's an observation that we would be failing them. And what can we do about that?
Bill's hand is up.
Yeah, I've got a let's chat issue, if you will. Uh, when we have put the let's chat thing out, it asks the person to identify themselves, get their telephone number and their email address. When it comes to identifying who's going to receive it, that's nobody there. There's a list of board members without telephone numbers and without email addresses. Now that seems awfully unfair, um, for publicly elected officials to not be approachable. And perhaps we're sending out some cues ourselves as to what, what the rank is and what have you. I know that it would be very disempowering for a lot of our parents to see that. And by the way, I did not receive a response to my let's chat.
And the reason for that, Bill, just so you know, is that it won't let me respond to you. And I sent it, and Melinda and I are trying to figure out why. So, because I tried and it won't, it won't even let me open it up to respond. So I was gonna hopefully figure that out. So.
Did you say, Bill, that you shut down the system?
I know, right? So, um.
Maybe it needed to be.
I saw Claire's hand up.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to respond to what Barbara said. I do think that um, different folks have different cultures of responding to authority and problem solving. And part of our job in a community is to kind of um, ask what it is that, that people are seeking, uh, in terms of their remedy or um, where they would like the question or the concern or the problem to go. I think that's, that falls on the system of people who have the power to kind of delve around it and to see what it is people are seeking, because not everybody is looking for the same outcome. Not everybody wants something in return. I just think a lot of times, uh, being heard and having that sense of uptake is pretty hard to get sometimes. When, when we bring something forward that's problematic or hurtful or shameful or, or whatever it is. And I can't imagine anybody having a whole lot of uh, patience to go through any kind of process right now with COVID and just how messed up everything is and how stressed out people are. I think I might want to just throw a brick at the wall and uh, kind of walk away um, in this day and age right now. But I do, I do think it's on us, uh, the people that have the power to sort of better understand what it is people are looking for. Um, I know as a younger person going up, going up the sort of hierarchy was not something I wanted to do. I didn't feel comfortable doing it. Now I can't wait to do it. I think, you know, you learn how to do it and uh, you get more comfortable, you have those skills where it becomes more a part of your, your culture and your how to. But I do think it's on us to, to ask people what it is that they want and what they need. Um, I know we do that uh, in social work with our clients and families we work with. Um, because it's really about being centered around the person coming to you.
Well, it makes a lot of sense. So, um, it is, not to be the timekeeper, but it is 7:45. And we've had a, I feel like we've had a lot of good discussion here this evening. Um, but I think we need to think about next steps or what next steps look like. Um, if we want to, you know, if we want, we have lots of options here. We can leave the global ends policy the way it is, knowing that it's implicitly in there around equity and race and know that Jean is already thinking about that, because that's just the kind of superintendent she is. But um, we also may want to be more uh, open so that the community knows where we're going. I'm just throwing things out here. So question is, where do we, you know, from tonight, do we want to have some sort of board initiative where we're continuing this discussion? Do we want to, um, what do we want to do?
I think one thing that we should do is every so often on a regular basis, have one of these metric discussions that Jean is talking about, where she brings in one set of data on one of the three principles that is relevant germane, and then we work through that for an exercise.
So that's the global end policy. Um, Jean is supposed to do that and Jean jump in at any point. But Jean is supposed to bring that to us once a year, I believe.
Yeah, but I like the idea because we haven't been able to, it's, it's so difficult. I'd love that, I'd love to do what Bill just said. I think that would be beneficial as we're fleshing out that policy. It's, it's tremendously huge. And so tackling it a little bit at a time could be really helpful.
Okay.
I think, I think at this time, uh, it's, it's hard to only look at something once a year, uh, especially in this um, section. I think it needs to be every other month or every month or we gotta, you know, figure out a timing where we can. Because obviously, I think with tonight's discussion, obviously, we've made, made it two hours now. Um, obviously, this is a huge, a huge position that the, the board is um, concerned with. So I think it definitely needs to be um, something that'll look at much more frequently until we hash it out and get it settled where everybody's comfortable.
Anyone else?
Lori, um, hi, it's Allison. Um, so, sorry, my camera's off because my five-year-old's stuck in the room. Um, what about community linkage in this whole process would be one of my questions, I guess.
What about community linkage? That's a good question.
Um, just because we didn't, we didn't, I, I don't know where it would fall. I don't know if it's too premature. Uh, you know, um, I know Becky mentioned um, obviously the students and the community. And, you know, part of the role is getting that community input. So um, you know, we sort of started with ambassadors last year and then COVID disrupted some of that for us. Um, I know some ambassadors have joined. So, you know, I guess that's the other, I know it's getting late now, but that's the other piece that I would just add to this.
Well, it's a good, it's a good question, because that is part of our job is um, is to do that. Is to get out into the community and, and find out what their thoughts and feelings are and, and, and go from there.
What about resurrecting the annual meeting and actually putting some of this substance to it? We might get two or three people even attend.
Pretty likely to be virtual this year. I don't know if that's helpful or not helpful.
Ooh, yeah, hadn't thought of that.
I'm type of attention is up with a virtual meeting, to be honest with you. People are, you know, a little bit more comfortable joining.
True, we have some visitors tonight, which is awesome.
It is. Um, I know, you know, at one point we had discussed keeping at least the second meeting of the month focused on, you know, sort of engaging the community and having those discussions. I don't know if that's still pertinent or relevant. Um, so I just wanted to, to mention that.
So, so the idea of uh, maybe bringing some, to your next second meeting, some, some metrics to you and then starting to work through those metrics, would that be a good next step for the board? I do know that we'd like to do a restorative practice presentation to you.
Can we take the notes that Allison put together and actually, can we actually do like a Google Drive that has notes from these meetings so we can act, not so, not so that we have to read through a whole three page?
You can't do anything that isn't completely open to the public. Everything you do has to be transparent and that's why we take minutes.
So can, or maybe, I'm just trying to think of a way to post or a way to, to gather our thoughts together. Because if we were in a room, we could have a actual, a piece of paper with everything on there and we can bring that paper back in for us.
Well, if Allison has sent me the, your, your goal statements, I can send them to Charlene so that they're included in the minutes. Perhaps she captured them. And then I can also share them with the board because they will go in the minutes. So, but you'd have a standalone. So, but you'd have a standalone, just those, but they would end up in the minutes so that anybody could see them. Would that help, Angela?
Then actually Allison sent all of those goals to everybody, so everybody has them.
So I'll make sure Charlene gets them.
Yeah.
I can send them, I think I have Charlene's email. Yeah, I sent them out for discussion here.
I'm just looking for something that, that, you know, when we have this discussion again and you bring metrics, you know, can we, is there a way to bounce them against what this discussion was today and not lose sight of what we've discussed tonight? And make sure we keep going back to those, those items. If you put them in, you put them in minutes, they're, they're gone. They're, they're six months later down the road. It's like, what, what meeting minutes was that in? And.
Well, we can create a standalone document from this and what came out of the meeting two months ago and put that in the packet as a standalone as well, if that would be helpful. It still would be public and in the packet, but it would be basically the equity work that you've been doing, kind of the comments altogether.
Yeah, separate it out would be awesome.
So do you, Jean, do you think that we could bring this back? Possibly for part of our December meeting? I know we're gonna be really into budgets by then because we need to have that.
We, I can do at least something, yeah, I think so. And then it all depends on how complicated the budget becomes, which I just don't know yet. You know, if you have to postpone it, at least it's there and you move forward.
Okay. So how does that sound to board members? I'm seeing lots of thumbs up. I think we've had a lot of good discussion tonight. I think that this isn't something that we can just talk about for a couple of meetings and then, you know, move on to something else. So I think we should just keep the conversation going and see where it takes us. And so we'll talk about, more about this in our next December meeting, which is December something.
The next one or the one after? Because it's not.
It'll be the one after.
Okay, yeah, the second one.
Be the second one, so December 16th?
That sounds right.
Yep, so December 16th, we would bring this back. And hopefully Jean would have some metrics for us and we could discuss those and see how they play into what our feelings on equity looks like. Okay, so, um, I want to thank everybody for their time tonight. I think that this was a really good discussion. Obviously, we haven't made any major decisions. We haven't figured it all out, but I think this starts us down the road. And I really want to appreciate, say thank you to everyone for your comments and your thoughts. So, does anybody have anything else that they would like to say before we move on or adjourn?
Excuse me?
Yeah, go ahead, Claire.
I just want to say thank you and it was a pleasure to meet all of you. Some, some of your faces, I know some of you I do some community work with, but thank you very much.
Yeah.
Claire, Claire, could you give us your last name for the record?
Sure, A S T O N E.
Thank you.
And I would put it up there if I knew how.
Okay, and Lori, I don't know if it, it is public forum time before you adjourn, just in case anyone else wishes to speak.
Oh, sure.
I was just hoping that Claire, Claire, you're a public member, I, I take it, correct? And how long you've been in, in the, in the district or in the?
I'm, I moved here to my home in Brandon the end of August last year.
Oh, wow, you're really new to the community. Thank you.
Yes, and I also sit on restorative justice here. I've been doing that for about a year now, so that's how I know some folks and I'm very invested in the community.
Well, I'm happy to see you here.
Thank you. I'm also one of your rally leaders, so you may see me around with signs.
And you too, Jen, glad you came.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you too. I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm allowed to say anything at this point, but thank you all. And I just, it was really nice to be a part of a school board meeting that was really civil and it, just a really nice change from the last few months. And I would encourage you all, keep listening to each other. As hard as it can be sometimes to listen to voices of dissent, it's much better to have this conversation amongst yourselves before you move forward with any community conversation. Be united in whatever you decide to do. And I'm happy to help out in any capacity. So thank you all very much for all the hard work.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, anybody else want to say anything? Board member or community member?
Boo to adjourn.
Eric had his hand up. I don't know if he wanted to say something.
Oh, if he does, go ahead. No? Okay, so then I will take a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
All right, well, you don't need to second it, just leave. Bye.
All right, see ya.